Hi, welcome everyone. This is the Auburn School Committee meeting for November 29th, 2023. I've called this meeting to order. This is the meeting of the Town of the Auburn School Committee. It's being conducted both in person and remotely consistent with Chapter 107 of the Acts of 2022, which suspends the requirement of the open-meeting law to have all meetings in a publicly accessible physical location. Further, all members are allowed to participate remotely as long as reasonable public access is afforded so that the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. For the public to join the meeting remotely through Zoom, please use the link posted on the agenda in the town's website. All supporting materials that have been provided to members of this body is available on the town's website. The public is encouraged to follow along using that posted agenda. Please note that this meeting is being recorded by the Auburn cable television. Thank you. Could we stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you.
The vision of the Auburn Public Schools is to educate and prepare students for the opportunities and challenges of a changing world. Our commitment, we will create, maintain, and support an environment that fosters a sense of belonging for all students in our schools, respecting race, color, sex, religion, national origin, sexual orientation, gender identity, homelessness, poverty, spoken language, and ability.
All right, thank you. We'll move on to Citizens' Comments. Is there anyone here for Citizens' Comments? Anyone on Zoom? Seeing no one, we will move on to Special Recognitions.
None tonight, not at the here.
Okay, we'll seek approval of the minutes from November 15th, 2023. I'll make a motion to accept the minutes from November 15th, 2023. Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
It is a vote. And we do have students here tonight, so we will do the Student Representatives Report.
So we had a lot going on this year, for this week, for the juniors. To update you on the lip sync battle, the juniors won. It was very exciting. We also just completed a successful popcorn drive for our class, and we raised over $5,000. So it was very successful. I also wanted to bring up the Rockets to Rockets Glow to Include Dance that's happening this Friday. It's like a glow-in-the-dark kind of dance, and it's going to be going on at the school. Kids from other schools are coming, and I think it's going to be a fun time.
So wow.
And in terms of what's coming up, it's finals week this week, which is really awesome for everybody involved. It split between today and tomorrow. I'm just going to be honest. It split between today and tomorrow, with the first day of Try Two being on Friday, which is exciting because we're already a third done, and it does not feel like it. But then I walked outside, and it was freezing cold, so yeah, summer's over. And we have an NHS field trip coming up to Quincy Market. I think they do this yearly. I did it last year. It was super fun. It's like a multi-disciplinary trip. You do walk a little bit of the Freedom Trail with Mr. Kennard. Eberg points out physics things and whoever, whatever other teachers are involved. Last year, there was a scavenger hunt with photos, and you had to be in them, and it was ridiculous. It was horrendous, but it was so much fun. Winter sports has started. I saw the indoor track kids running in the hallways after school today. I was at my varsity math meet, so yup, super cool. It was actually, they are actually really fun. Auburn has been hosting them for all of the years that I've been doing it, barring COVID. So many schools come. I know South High brought 50 kids on their math team. They get extra credit. So we have to use the presentation room and the cafeteria. But they are really fun. You get to meet a lot of people from other schools that you wouldn't necessarily get a chance to. Another announcement, Auburn has been selected as a ceremonial stop for the Reefs Across America convoy. I don't know if anyone heard about that. It's an organization that travels from Maine to Arlington National Ceremony every December and places remembrance wreaths on every veteran's headstone, and Auburn was selected this year. They will be welcoming the convoy on December 11th, which is exciting, and it's, it's very impressive. It includes tractor trailers, Patriot Guard riders, and nearly 200 participants. And as well, there's already meetings for Mr. Auburn this spring for people to sign up. That's the senior boys' like beauty pageant, which we will never let them hear, we call it. And there are already auditions for the Spring Musical, which is what they talked about last time. Kaylee and Zoe are the seniors who are there. It is the Hunchback of Notre Dame, and the auditions are after school on December 5th and 6th, and callbacks on December 7th.
Wow, you got a lot going on over there.
Oh, yeah.
Awesome, great. Any questions or comments from the committee?
Good luck on finals.
I'm just curious, what did the juniors do in the lip sync?
So we did a Y2K theme. We had like songs from Eminem. We had like DMX. It was really fun. It was a good win.
I don't even, I was not involved in that. It was so long. It was, they were all really good, so I think seniors came in second, and then even the freshmen were, they were adorable, but they were adorable because you're like-
No recognition for the sophomores.
And the sophomores were great too, but the freshmen, I mean, because when we were freshmen, we had COVID, but as sophomores, we were, but the freshmen were adorable. Everyone did really well, so it was, you sat there and you watched all of them, and it was so cute.
Who were the judges?
Do you remember? Mr. Cutler was one of them.
Oh, so they were teachers.
Yeah. Ms. Duffy was one. I can't remember who else. Those are the judgiest of the two, I think.
That's cool. Nice, great. Sounds like fun.
If I can just tag on Bella, thank you for bringing up the Reefs Across America. There'll be something going out to the community. I did hear from Sergeant Kennedy from the Police Department, who helped to organize that event, and they will be coming at about 1 o'clock that day, and seemingly they've arranged the route to go up Swanson Road, so past Bryn Mawr and past Swanson Road Intermediate School. So we have some things planned for the students to be out, to welcome them. It's quite a logistical thing, time-wise, but when more information is available, I'll be sharing it with the community because it really is, as Bella described, something to see. So it's exciting.
That is very exciting. Great, thank you guys for that report. Good luck with your finals.
Thank you.
All right, we'll move on to the student spotlight.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So this evening, we have some students from Swanson Road School who are going to tell us about Girls on the Run. So I'll let them introduce themselves.
I think they asked that I at least introduce their coaches. So welcome, and we're so excited to have Girls on the Run today. We have our coaches, Mrs. King and Ms. O'Connor, here to introduce our girls, who will be running this Sunday, but I'll let you, let them explain Girls on the Run and all the fun they've been having.
Hi, I'm Molly O'Connor. I teach STEM and tech at Swanson, and I've coached Girls on the Run. I think this is my fourth full season. We did start a season in February of 2020. That didn't happen. I've been an assistant coach. I've been the head coach now for a couple of years, and we are so excited to tell you a little bit about Girls on the Run. So it's built around, it's an evidence-based curriculum to kind of boost confidence, and it's based on three main principles. So it's understanding ourselves, like our mental and our physical selves, as like third, fourth, and fifth graders, valuing relationships and teamwork, and understanding like how working together and supporting one another is going to help us reach all of our goals, and then recognizing how we can help shape the world at large. So we do a small community service project at the end of the season. It's just something that we can do like in our building within the time that we have allotted, but it is something that the girls kind of take the lead on. They decide what they want to do and who they want to help. We meet two times a week, and we split our time between lessons. Part of it is that we do a lesson, meaning like we talk about a certain theme, such as like conflict and friendships. Mara is going to tell you a little bit about that. But we also then train for a non-competitive 5K at the end of the season, which is just something we do all together. Everyone finishes, everyone does it in whatever time they can, and it makes for like a really wonderful, joyous celebration at the end. We start off by making connections, and I'll just kind of segue to our students with that in a second, but the first thing that we do at our very first meeting, I can, my sticky paper, is we make a list, there we go, of, there we go. It's almost like a constitution for Girls on the Run. So we make a list of the things that are going to be important to us, I think at the top it just says Girls on the Run, that are going to be important to us as a team throughout the season. So we decide on things that we want to work on and focus on every practice. We came up with, or the girls did, we didn't. The girls kind of came up with these ideas. We sort of streamlined it, and we all signed it so that we could remember. I have it hanging in my classroom, so every time we meet, we can remember to have each other's backs, be positive, have fun, listen to and respect each other. That was a big one that we talked about, is seeing, feeling seen and heard. So I'm going to now have Lola, our fifth grader, who's done Girls on the Run a couple of times, speak a little bit about some of the principles that we work on and what she likes about it.
Um, so I've done Girls on the Run for like around two years now, and at the beginning of Girls on the Run, I was like a very slow runner, and I didn't have that much confidence in myself for running. But what I've like learned over the past two years is that it doesn't really matter how fast of a runner you are, it just matters the teamwork that you have with your other like teammates. And Girls on the Run has definitely helped me see my strengths as a runner. And something we focus on a lot in Girls on the Run is our star power, which is basically, you find what makes you happy, and then if you're ever feeling down, you kind of think about what activates your star power. And then my favorite part of Girls on the Run is probably getting to meet new people and see what you have in common with people, and learning new things about each other and about how you can be a better runner and more confident in yourself.
Sounds great. That was amazing.
Mara, come up next.
Lessons are about confidence and friendship with other people to make friends and definitely have fun. That's what I love about Girls on the Run. What I love about Girls on the Run is definitely the running. It helps outbring my energetic self, and it definitely helps with my ADHD. It's much, I enjoy doing Girls on the Run. It pushes me to do things that I probably couldn't do a while ago, but now when I do it, I feel confident and have brightness in myself.
Beautiful.
Bella, come on up.
Um, about running, first, we set our lap goals in the soccer field. Then we think connections between our mind and body. My favorite thing about Girls on the Run is definitely the running because it helps me like just focus more.
Excellent.
So I'm Mrs. King. I'm a third grade teacher. So this is my first season. I'm super excited. On Sunday, as Ms. O'Connor mentioned, is our kind of like culminating 5K. It's just a super fun celebration of all the hard work that the girls have put in this season. Registration is still open if anyone wants to run or come cheer on the Girls on Sunday. It's going to be a really great time, and just a great time to celebrate everything that the girls have done this season, and as you guys heard, it's just absolutely incredible. 10:00 AM at Lake Park.
Anyone have any questions for us or the girls about the program?
How many members are there?
We do 15 girls per season.
Okay, great.
And through the chair, it's open to third, fourth, and fifth grade?
Third, fourth, and fifth, yup, and it's on a sliding scale, so there is a cost to participate because of the race, and they provide all kinds of cool materials for us, including the shirts, but it's on a sliding scale, which is really nice, so you can kind of go into it coming from anywhere, which is great.
Through the chair, do you do it in the spring as well?
Yes.
It's a spring handful.
Standing on it. Let's see.
Well, I have to say, it may have helped your running, but the three of you spoke so beautifully, and what I thought was amazing, was as soon as you said my favorite part about Girls on the Run, you didn't need to look at a piece of paper. You looked right at us, and you spoke from your heart, and so that tells us that it means a lot to you and that you've grown a lot from it. Because honestly, to get up and speak in front of all these people is not an easy thing to do for a lot of grownups. So I commend you for that, and I'm going to think about what my star power is next time I need it, so thank you for that.
Through the chair, I was going to say, I loved hearing the words star, star power, brightness. I love, I love all that, so go on.
Great job, girls. That was excellent.
So you all are going to be free to go, but I'd like the girls and everybody to come up and shake our hands if that's okay.
I'm going to actually leave this with you also. It's one of our journals.
Oh, excellent.
Yeah, we, every week, we fill out like a different page. We focus on different things.
Nice, excellent, thank you.
Girls, can you come down, so we can each shake your hands before you go? Come on, it's all right.
I know, you did it.
Yeah.
Love that you used star power, that was great.
Thank you so much for coming. Nicely done. Run, run, run on Sunday.
Good luck, Sunday. Good luck.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much for coming. Nicely done.
So fun. Have a good night.
So fun.
That's a good thing or a bad thing?
I know, I broke it.
Yeah, I'm sorry. We should have built that in the middle. It was a little break.
Okay. Good luck with finals.
Yeah, good luck with finals with that math one.
Thank you.
Bye, girls. Thank you very much. See you next time.
I love the constitution that they create. That's so cute.
Yeah, that was great. You can just tell they love it.
Yep. They're learning so many great life skills. Wow. It's good stuff.
Love it. Um, who were those teachers again? Mrs. King.
This is the third grade teacher.
Okay, she's the tech teacher. Great, all right.
And now, so the air gets sucked out of the room?
Yup. Move on to the budget. All right, I'll turn it over to you, Dr. Chamberlain.
All right, thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Keller and I are going to go sit down that way, and I'm going to head to the podium as we begin our FY25 draft budget presentation. You don't want me to touch the mouse anymore? Want me to touch the mouse? No, I don't want to mess it up.
Man, this is stressful for you, isn't it?
I'm kind of freaking out. I'm kind of stressed.
Should we move closer to you guys?
And I have like a sneeze, so my eyes start to wander. This is just great. All right, move this over here. There we go. All right, thank you very much. So welcome, everyone. This is the biggest crowd ever for a budget presentation, so we'll do our best to keep it interesting. So good evening, Madam Chair, Ms. McCrillis, Vice Chair, Ms. Wren, Ms. Rayfield, Ms. Parker, members of the leadership team, all the folks here in this room, those on Zoom and those listening from home. I have to start by saying how proud I am to be before you this evening as the Superintendent of the Auburn Public Schools. I'm honored to be a part of this team of educators, leaders, school committee members, support staff, and community members, who have always demonstrated a true, consistent, and dedicated commitment to our kids. I'd also like to take a moment to thank the administrators who comprise the Auburn Public Schools' leadership team. The work they do to support teachers, staff, kids, and myself on a daily basis is just the work they do is amazing. We work together collaboratively, collegially, and we remember the importance of kindness, laughter, and some way to find the joy in the work we do every day, even though some days are harder than others. The Auburn Public, the Auburn community has always supported the schools, and thus, I believe it's been a key factor in maybe making the Auburn Public Schools what it is today, a great place to work and a great place to learn. So tonight, we'll share with you our vision and our hopes for the FY25 school year and the impact this vision will have on our budget. We've been thoughtful and careful in preparing this for you tonight, and we'll be happy to address any questions along the way, so feel free to chime in if you have anything to ask. As is our practice, when we begin to discuss our hopes for the district, they're always aligned with our mission, vision, and a commitment. A commitment we referenced at the beginning of this meeting and every other meeting as we move through the school year. This is the document you've seen many times before that outlined the major areas of focus included in the 2023-2026 Auburn Public Schools Strategic Plan. This continues to be a working document that drives the decisions we make on a daily basis, to ensure that, as I have said many times before, we are all rowing in the same direction. We strongly believe that each school, from preschool to high school, and along with our encore folks that are here in this building, should have guideposts that keep us focused on the same goals. I think as you hear the presentations of the leadership team tonight, you will hear common themes throughout. This is not by accident, it is by design. This allows us the most effective use of our resources, with the goal being the academic, social, and emotional success of our kids. This budget reflects the commitments and goals in the strategic plan, along with the priorities from the school committee. Maintaining appropriate and effective class sizes, maintaining positions focused on the social and emotional health of students that had been funded through ESAR, and those funds we will, will go away in September of 2024. To ensure that all of our content areas have updated curriculum materials, obviously to ensure that our contractual obligations are met, and that faculty, staff, and students feel respected and supported, and we continue to respect the ongoing support that we receive from the townspeople of Auburn and Auburn Town Leadership. We have maintained staffing levels to meet the class size recommendations of the school committee, with 25 or less at the elementary and appropriate at middle and high, along with making sure that we have the appropriate staffing levels certainly for our special needs students. October 1st enrollment counts were used to make this, in this decision-making process. You will see that school-based materials and supplies have been basically level-funded, and there's some reasons for that with some other things, obviously, that are coming up in the coming year. We have no new, new positions reflected in this budget this year, and again, we maintain the emphasis on the social and emotional well-being of our students. All the instructional assistants and ABAs, they've been noted in their current assignments, although once next year rolls around, they will be shifting to accommodate for the movement of students. We have level-funded grant monies for the 240 Grant, the Title I Grant, and the Title II A Grant. These amounts tend to vary very little from year to year. We might be up or down a few thousand dollars, but nothing that can significantly impact our budget, so we grant, we level fund those. We've projected the Medicaid reimbursement to be $140,000, as adjusted and approved at the Fall Town Meeting, and anticipating the use of any carryover funds, which sometimes we have, and we'll know that later this year. Special education circumbreaker reimbursement is anticipated conservatively at 70% for the budgeting process, and bus application fees will be utilized to provide offsets of $150,000 from the revolving account. We continue to use offsets from revolving account, including building rentals, satellite, galaxy, preschool, and athletic accounts. We currently have 76 school choice seats that are filled, so obviously there's funding that comes through that. As was the case last year, we've budgeted again for 11 regular education school buses at the beginning of last year, and again at the beginning of this year. There was some question as to whether we were going to need another bus, which is another huge financial obligation, but even with increased registration for the use of the buses, we've been able to manage our busing quite successfully this year. We have accounted for an anticipated 5% increase in special education private school tuition for out-of-district replacements. This increase is determined by the Operational Services Division of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, so it's not anything we have any say in, it's what they give us. Last year, if you'll recall, it was a 14% increase, so 5% seems to be a bit more in the range of what's reasonable. We are going to continue to staff, staff the social and emotional, mental health positions, which assisted in decreasing our need for out-of-district placements. So as you know, several years ago, we began these programs at Swiss Middle School and the High School using some of our ESAR funding. These programs are designed to support students with social-emotional needs that cannot be met in the general education classroom, but the goal of these programs is to give the kids the skills that allow them to return to the general education classroom. These programs have helped us to do this and helped decrease the number of students who have been outplaced to therapeutic settings, which, as you know, can be extremely costly to the district. I'm pleased to report that under the, with the efforts and guidance of Mr. Walton, the Director of Pupil Services, we have been successful in keeping kids in. In FY22, we had 18 students outplaced with a range of tuition between $39,000 a year and $88,000 per year. So that's all dependent upon the actual placement itself and the services that the student needs. And, you know, we support the out-of-district placement when the needs of the student warrants it, because we have students who truly do need that. But the programs we're building are going to help kids who we can help here in the district to stay in, and in fact, in FY24, we only had 12 students who were outplaced. So already in a few years, the amount of money that's been saved by keeping these kids in has been remarkable, and not only that, it allows the kids to stay with their, with their peers in their district. Increases in electricity, fuel, and contracted services continue to rise around the country, and these have been reflected, and you'll hear more about that in a few minutes more This year, we're negotiating contracts with two groups, the AEA being our largest, the start dates for these two contracts begin July 1 of 2024, and so some of that is unknown at this point with what the impact to the budget is going to be. Oil pricing for FY25 is currently known at $2.6490. Mrs. Worsbicky, in collaboration with other folks, procured this pricing in June of 2023 as part of the French River Collaborative, and we continue to collaborate with the town on our electricity supply contract. That was determined a couple of years ago, along with our national gas contract, so you'll see the rates for that, those we have been able to secure very good pricing, particularly the electricity one, and I appreciate the work of Mrs. Worsbicky and Mr. Fahy on that. We apply the use of solar credits that we get from the rooftop arrays at the middle school and a high school, along with the town solar project that's in Rutland, to offset some of our electrical costs. So our projected offsets for this budget are $3,504,928.78, which is a huge amount of money that won't hit what we're looking for for the town, as we've been able to decrease the amount by that. So as we move forward, we're going to move into each of the folks here, speaking about their portion of the budget a little bit. You can ask questions. You'll see that anything, any of the amounts highlighted in yellow are areas of increase, where we've gone a little bit, you know, up from last year, and anything in green will show places where we've decreased. Do you have any questions at this time for me? No? So we're going to move on. Mr. Keller will present his portion of the budget, and we'll go from there, and again, ask any questions you'd like as we move forward.
Good evening, everyone. One thing that you'll notice as you listen to all the presentations tonight is, I think what we have is a foundational work, where strong organizations focus and put their energy and efforts behind a few priorities, and you'll see that reflected in all the principals' presentations tonight. And so I'm happy, as the Assistant Superintendent, to be able to talk about a couple of these things that you will certainly hear repeated throughout. The first is a goal and an initiative that's been in place, will be in its fourth year next year, Universal Design for Learning, that I'm sure you've heard of. UDL allows us to design instruction to meet the needs and abilities of all of our students. The next piece up here is a Health and Physical Education Comprehensive Curriculum, so this year, the Department of Education released new health and physical education standards for preschool through grade 12. This is the first update to those standards since 1996. We've just begun looking at these standards and trying to understand the impact, so we have our wellness teachers, nurses, and counselors. They all have a role in addressing the student well-being and teaching these skills, and so as we look to FY25, that is an area that we are going to focus on with resources and materials and textbooks for, for our students. Another thing that will be taking place that we've initiated this year for looking at next year is launching a professional development committee. We have a lot of expertise, as I know you all know, on our staff, and a lot that our teachers have to offer one another, and so we are beginning a professionally, a professional development committee to examine the needs that all of our schools and all of our levels have, and giving teachers an opportunity to, to share their expertise across the district and examine gaps and overlaps where we may have those in professional development. Both our middle school and elementary schools will be coming off license with their current textbooks. They have two different textbook series, so that's one area that we'll be looking at next year, spending time examining. So that's one area that we'll be looking at next year, spending time examining what makes sense for a textbook series. There is a case to be made for having a similar textbook, K through 8, where you can eliminate some of the transitioning from one textbook series. That's not the only reason to go with a similar textbook. So that's sometime, some of the things that we're going to be doing next year is examining textbooks that we actually started looking at some today at the middle school level. And for FY '26 to begin to say, this is the textbook that we think makes the most sense for our students. So data protocols are something that's really important. You know, I talked earlier about some foundational pieces and making sure that we are strong as an organization in examining data, looking at bright spots, and replicating those across the district. That's some of the work that we will continue to take part in next year is making sure that all the schools, all the departments are constantly and regularly looking at data, not just MCAS, but all the different data points from across the students' day and finding areas of strength and bright spots, and then also looking at areas where we can improve. And finally, embedding culturally responsive practice and equity that builds capacity in the district is a major goal, and that was established in 2021 with the Equity Audit, the district's Equity Audit. And we are looking to continue that work on building competencies and skills for our staff throughout the district. In terms of line items, we were able to make some purchases using grant funding and using FY '24 funds. And so you can see that for next year, we're looking at reducing the FY '25 line item for textbooks down from, down to $50,000. I'm requesting at this time, no new positions. And before I turn it over to Mr. Walton for Director of Pupil Services, I just wanted to check and see if there's any questions.
Questions? I do have one question.
Yeah.
Not going to let you off that easy.
Okay. I should have just jumped right to Mr. Walton.
Yeah. For the textbooks, did you create like a subcommittee for that?
So for the math or for the wellness?
Yeah, for either or both.
Yes, yeah. So we've, we're just at those initial stages of forming a math textbook committee. But yes, so like the middle school today, it was just the entire department was having a conversation. But yes, there will be a K through 8 committee, similar to what we did last year with the reading curriculum, where we'll have representatives from each grade level. And then we're having a meeting on January, what's the PD days? Is it January 2, I think, that we come back? So January 2, we're beginning the conversations around health and wellness and having all the health educators and the nurses and the counselors look at some of those standards. And then we'll be moving forward with having a subcommittee so it's not everybody doing those things.
All right, great. Yeah, it's just important to get the feedback from the faculty and teachers and things.
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you. With that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Walton.
Good night, everyone. So the areas for focus in 2025 and special education, Dr. Chamberlain did speak a lot about this, but it is to retain and provide services for social, emotional, and behavioral students and students within the district. You know, we started a couple of programs in the last two years, and they have proven to be successful. We started one at Swiss, we started one at the middle school, and we started one at the high school. And we were able to keep a handful of students within district. Recently, I've been talking to out-of-district programs, and we're actually going to start to bring some of our students back. I've had the opportunity to go out and actually observe some of these programs, and, you know, we're not too far off. We do have some tweaks to make to our programs, but we're not too far off. One of the areas I do want to look at that the out-of-district schools focus on is data collection and, you know, to show when students are ready to go back into the general ed classroom. Like Dr. Chamberlain said, last year, I think we had 17 students out of district. This year, we have 12, with a couple coming back hopefully in 2025. Next area is the rollout of the new IEP. So it was guidance from DESI. Next year, there will be a new IEP across the entire state. I've gone, myself and a couple of team chairs have already started going to trainings, and we have met a couple of times in district to look at what we need to do to provide our staff with training. So by 2025, we must make sure that the special education teachers are trained, related services, and then we will roll it out to the general ed teachers for them to be able to understand the IEP. But one of the biggest roles I think that I play in this is getting it up to the parents so that they can understand it and read it, because there's no guidance from DESI that's going to teach them on how to understand the IEP. So that's one thing that I'm looking at with my team chairs, is how can we get the parents involved so that they can understand the IEPs? And IEPs are not two hours long instead of 30 minutes, or two hour long. Another focus, I have a couple of areas of focus, but one thing I wanted to look at was the Encore program. When it first started, it was a unique program across the state. It was for students that completed their requirements to receive a diploma but needed transition or life skills or vocational skills. This past year, we were able to, well, four students were able to move on. One aged out and three of them were able to accept the diploma. And out of the four students, three of the students left with jobs in the community, paying jobs. So to me, that was like, it was, yeah, it was. But it was, for me, remarkable, you know? I talked to a lot of agencies, DDS, MRC, Viability, which is a pre-eds program, and we're one of the few districts that have a program like this. So my goal is to use the program to be, bring in students from out of district with similar profiles to help fund some of the other areas in special education, especially the programs that we created for social-emotional students. Any questions before I go to line items?
It sounds amazing. Just keep going. It's great.
Okay. Changes to line items for health supplies, you did see an increase in 2025, 2025 year because there's no offset from ESER. For special education in-town transportation, sorry, I didn't say, is $14,000 for the health supplies. For special education in-town, we will see an increase per contract, so that number is $481,724. For non-public transportation, we did see a 5% increase, which is $279,453. Tuition for mass public schools was $16,200, with a 5% increase. Tuition for non-public schools was $684,560, and that's with us, sorry, that's a decrease from us keeping a couple of students in district. Tuition for special education collaborative, we also saw a decrease, and that number is As far as new positions in districts, we are requesting none.
Great.
Any questions?
No questions or comments?
Through the chair, so there are going to be like staff development on the new IEP? Is it a really big change or?
So in the previous IEP, you could pre-populate some statements. Now it's more open for you to write into the IEP and involve the students. So students now have multiple sections that they're involved in. In the past, they were only involved in their vision. So it's just little things like that. We will provide changes for the special education teachers from myself and my team chairs, and that's what we're preparing currently.
Thank you.
Great. Through the chair, the tuition to non-public schools?
Yep.
Is that something like depending on the severity of the disability, they're covered up to a certain age?
Yes.
Like to 21, right?
22, correct.
Me too.
The day before their 22nd birthday.
Wow, okay. That's very specific. Thank you.
All right, well, I'll turn it over to Mr. Joe Fahy, Director of Facilities.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And my buddy that gives me no... This?
Good evening.
Thank you, Mr. Walton. So area focuses. So what we're going to do is we're going to continue our building security with our district ride safety team, as we have done previously. We have a great team made up of police, fire, superintendent of schools. And we're excited this year because, as you probably aware of through our last town meeting, we appropriated $95,000 for additional safety measurements along with SCIP. So we're excited to do a couple of good projects. Next, we have resurfacing the running track at Auburn High School. As you know, the building was built 2005, 2006. We already had it resurfaced once, and we do again. If we don't, we're just going to deteriorate the track. So we're excited with that. We've been saving over the last couple of years with SCIP funds, and we contracted with Boulder Engineering. We'll put it out to bid, like to do this month, if not next month, get the prices. And our goal is to get it resurfaced when school gets out this June. And the next goal is energy improvement projects at Brenmore School. And I have to say, it's just not Brenmore School. We do energy improvement projects with all of our schools. However, this year, through the work of our green communities that we participate with the town, we usually do, one year we do town, next year we do schools, and we flip-flop each year. We get pretty much free funding based off of the project. So last year, we did a heat pump project for the Marion Building, and this year, we're going to focus on the gymnasium slash cafeteria at Brenmore, and also through our regular CIP, take care of, put some heat pumps in downstairs, and this will enable the whole building to be under the control of the heat pumps. So similar to what we'd have at Pakachog and the intermediate school. So the big goal there is to obviously reduce our carbon footprints, and we're excited about that. I got a couple of pictures. The picture to my left, it's not the mural that Dr. Lopez had done years ago. It's in front of it, it's the oil, we removed the oil tank. Nothing against the pictures, it's, I love.
Beautiful mural.
But what we did was similar to here over at the middle school, we installed propane tanks underground. So we removed the oil tank, which is basically a ticking bomb, ticking time bomb, that it didn't make sense to put oil back into the ground in the way, the way we're going with the world. Again, trying to reduce our carbon footprint, we opted with propane, we replaced the burners inside, we upgraded the chimney, the hot water heater, and all this was done pretty much just before school started, so nobody knew, which was good. It was a great project. And the picture to my right shows the parking lot over at Brenmore School. We, through our CIP, we resurfaced the parking lot, and then we also extended the playground parking lot on the left side, which is where the picture is. Because we had, over the years, we had constant problems with just dirt roots, kids falling in playground, you know, when they're out there trying to have their recess. So it was, it was quite an accident waiting to happen. So we're happy that we're able to expand that. And we had a famous PTO group go and do some line painting and make it look like an elementary school playground. So it looks really good. It doesn't show you that in the picture, but on the right-hand side, we also upgraded the electrical service, so, which was another huge undertaking that was done. We converted our single-phase system to a three-phase system, which would enhance any future projects at Brenmore. In other words, we're able to put in three-phase equipment, which is more efficient, cost-effective. So as we move forward with our heat pump project, perhaps maybe a future kitchen renovation, we're able to put three-phase power into that, so, in the years to come. So it was a great move. So next is the line changes to our budget. And if you look to the left on 24, these are, these are real numbers, guys. This is what we spent. And you'll see the increase as Dr. Chamberlain talked about the increase in our electricity and our natural gas. We had some great rates that we procured over the years, and those great rates have gone away. So we still have a good rate moving forward, but they're nothing to like they were. So that's why if you look on the right-hand side, it shows, shows the dramatic increases. And I won't go through line by line, but, because they're all in yellow, and that means it's an increase. But I'd be more than happy to answer any of your questions regarding that. You do see a reduction in the building repair and maintenance at the middle school. Again, we truly look at year to year on what we spend. So if, just because we had $80,000 last year, we're not going to automatically put $80,000 into this year. So we really look at it, and then we look at the life expectancy. So we feel we're trying to do our due diligence, reduce it the best we can, so we're able to cut some off. As you see here, the line items to all of our elementary schools, the same thing. Today, actually, the yellow is not a good thing, but it's a reflection on what we actually spend and where we actually need to be. And I have to say, I spoke a little bit about this this morning, that part of the reasons why we have these increases is, you know, 20, 25 years ago, all we had to deal with was heat, right? So if we got through the winter, we're able to push our way through the following year, and we'd be okay. Now we have to deal with HVAC, we have to deal with prevailing wage, we have to, the high cost of repairs. Now, as we know, this past, this past spring, we had some heat waves, and, you know, it was unbearable in some of these classrooms when the air conditioners went down. You know, trust me, I think a few of these people actually will let me know. The air conditioner is not a luxury, it's a necessity, it really is, you know, for our teachers and for our students. So we never had to deal with that before, and now we do. Same thing here to changes to the line items for our facility. Building security, we're going to up it back up to 20. We kind of flip-flop every couple of years, we go from 15 to 20. Again, as that needs changes, we'd like to put it into our budget. So, sorry for all the yellow, but...
It's not your fault.
It's truly, it's truly real numbers, guys. It really is. In closing, I have to say that our buildings reflect it. In other words, it's so nice to hear, I get calls from the architects that built the high school and actually the middle school, and they say, they love giving to us. They say, Joe, your buildings look fantastic. You know, and a lot of that is because we, we support it. We support it. Our administration maintains it as well. So they, we demand nothing but the best for our kids and for our teachers. And it shows it. They said, Joe, we talk about Auburn in other districts when we're building new schools because we have what it takes to get it done and to keep it. They don't want to build buildings and have it have a tailgate warranty. You know, they want these buildings to last because it's their names on it. And in Auburn, we support it, and it shows. So again, I thank you very much.
Thank you.
Every town needs a Joe. That's all. Every town. Be fine.
Thank you.
Any questions for Joe? I mean, the major increase to Pakachog, is there something specific or is that just basic maintenance and...?
That's maintenance, maintenance, and actually, again, as I spoke about air conditioning, you know, if, if a compressor goes down, which, which we have had happen, it's a, it's a big cost, you know? Pretty similar to if a boiler goes down now, so...
Okay. All right. It's not my favorite presentation, but...
It isn't, it isn't mine either. It isn't mine either. I really wish I was going to have one of those kids actually come up and do my presentation.
I know, right?
I thought they were fabulous.
Soften the blow a little bit.
Thank you, everybody. Next, I leave it up to Mr. Bouvier, Director of Technology.
Good evening. I think it's only fair, I take a little responsibility for the electrical upgrades because we've brought in a lot of technology, and technology touches everything nowadays. Poor Joe has to deal with technology to open the doors and pretty much everything that goes on in these buildings nowadays, so some of that, I think, is our fault, Joe, right? Oh, yeah. Yeah, yeah. That's okay, we work together really well. And so I'm happy to be up here telling you a little bit about what we're doing in technology and what we're looking forward to. You're going to see a lot of things that oddly enough you don't see about technology when you're looking at what we're doing, but that is critical to making sure that everything that we do here runs and runs effectively and smoothly. And the first thing that's on my list of focuses for next year is continuing to really look at district network security and device security. It is becoming more and more important every year that we meet standards, continue to upgrade equipment that is obsolete and old and potential security problems, update software, look at implementing new security procedures and applications in areas we'd never thought three years ago we were going to have to do. Some of it is to protect the students, to protect the staff, some of it is going to be... Some of it is going to be mandated by insurance policies, especially digital cyber insurance policies moving forward. And most of it is just good practice. So this past year, for instance, we upgraded our email security system. It was, the one we were using was older, built on some older technology. We brought in a new system that integrated closely with our firewall. Coincidentally, it lined up with that decrease in the computer maintenance. It was less money. It did more, it was, it was more cost-effective for us. So those types of things are going to have to be implemented more and more. Mr. Marchand, my network manager, is looking really intently at how our firewall is configured, the security programs that are running to make sure that every year, we're getting more and more secure. Districts across the country are getting hit with a variety of security breaches and incidents. And, you know, we were at one point the victim of one a long time ago. And we don't want that to happen again. And we are continuing to, to implement that type of digital security. Including this year, for the first time, we offered our staff some training in anti-phishing and email security, which is the number one way that breaches can enter your district through just a simple email that is very hard to discern as being fake or problematic. And as a result, it can allow a bad actor into the network to do who knows what. So those are great types of programs that we've been implementing. We're also going to be looking at district protections for student data privacy. And this is going to be relatively new on a more formal level for Auburn public schools. But we have to make sure that all of the digital programs and online programs in the cloud and everything we're doing is protecting the, the security of our students. There are certain rules regarding students of certain ages, what they can and can't access, how they can, how they can access content, what data is being mined by these individual companies, how they use it, do they sell it? Is it something that they keep forever, that they delete it when the district terminates the contract? These are types of things we have to investigate now pretty much on everything that we do to make sure that our students' future safety is in play. So student data privacy is going to be a big thing moving forward. It is across the nation. It's just what we're going to have to do. It doesn't necessarily cost us a lot of money, but it's a critical component of making sure that everyone is safe on the network. And then completing necessary upgrades and replacement of instructional technology is something we're always trying to do this year. We replaced iPads at fifth and ninth grades. Those iPads will stay with the kids as they move through fifth through eight and nine through 12. We replaced some of our oldest iPads in the elementary schools, the ones that were no longer compatible with some of our curriculum program. We were able to replace those. We're replacing our oldest switches in the district, which are at the high school. They were original to the building of the building, which has, Dr. Fahey, he said, was 2006, so they've, they've been around a while. And we're replacing the access points for the wireless at both the middle and high school. Both projects, the switch and the wireless, are paid for through E-Rate funding, which, if you're not familiar with, is a federal program that provides reimbursement to schools for certain technology. We get E-Rate reimbursement on our internet. We get E-Rate reimbursement on networking equipment and security equipment and pretty much anything that allows for the transmission of the internet to two devices. So that was a 50% reimbursement on those equipment. We take advantage of that when we, when we absolutely can. So we'll also be looking at a variety of other technologies throughout the district. We continuously look at labs in the high school and the middle school where, with those, are those computers still meeting the needs of some of those functional rooms, CAD, video, those types of things. So there's a lot, there's always a lot going on. But it, it's always changing and it's always fun. So when you look at the budget for next year, there's a small increase to the computer supplies. That's, that can be where we buy a laptop because somebody broke a laptop, or buy Apple TVs, or any of those cables, lots and lots of cables. So those go up pretty much every year a little bit. Computer maintenance services are coming down because we were able to replace two programs with cost-effective, less costly programs. So both the email security and our backup solutions that we implemented have saved us money. So that's reflected there. Some things have continued to go up, and that's why computer software aligned continues to rise. Most of our software, I think I said this last year, now is cloud-based software. It's a subscription-based model. We, we own very little software. We rent it year to year now. So those numbers typically rise every year by a percentage. There's just no way around it, but they're critical to what we do and we have to move forward with them. So we try to be judicious with it and do the best we can, but inevitably, that number, that number climbs every year. So. Have any questions?
That's good.
Great.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. This is where Vicki's coming up now.
Okay, good evening, everyone. So I went ahead, sorry. Okay. All right. So in looking forward to FY '25 areas of focus and expectation, working, first one will be working with leadership to effectively utilize the allocation of grants to supplement targeted educational needs. We get many grants throughout the year and just every year, and we just have to make sure that we're allocating them properly for the way they were written and just trying to supplement those. As Dr. Chamberlain mentioned, the offsets, grants offset a lot of the budgetary expenses. Next is coordinating with the Directors of Facilities and Technology on utilization of the capital improvement funds, which Mr. Fahey and Mr. Bouvier both talked about, our CIP monies, using those to make improvements in the buildings and with our technology. To work jointly with the Director of Food Services, Breann Pulver, who's our new food service director, who's doing a great job, to ensure the continued fiscal stability of the school lunch program. Currently, the school lunches are free, but, you know, just maintaining and, and keeping track of expenses and making sure we're using, taking and expensing like capital expenditures too, to, to improve, like Mr. Fahey mentioned something about upgrading, like we're looking at upgrading potentially one of the kitchens at the schools. And there is some extra money to work on that with the food service monies, which is a, it's a separate account from the budget. So it's in, held in a separate account, so it doesn't reflect anything with the budget, but working with her to keep that financially stable. Collaborating with the transportation vendor and school resource officers and crossing guard to ensure student safety, which is of the utmost importance to all of us. We want to make sure our children get to and from school safely. To work in conjunction with the payroll, accounts payable and central, central office staff to promote streamlining of systems and procedures to achieve more efficient and productive workflow processes. We've had a few changes in the payroll department, but we've been working really hard to get back up to speed and make sure everything, people are paid accordingly. And so we're working very hard on that and communicating and that type of stuff. Then collaborating with town departments to ensure that all financial and personal transactions are completed in a timely manner. We've had some changes in the town departments. CFO Kacenovitch, who was our CFO, has now become our town manager. And we've gotten a new CFO and accountant, town accountant, which is Karen Harnoys. So I've been working with her as well. And also, we have a new assistant town manager and director of HR, Dory Vecchio, who I've been working with as well. So just making sure that we're doing all the things that we need to do. And we've been collaborating very well with them as far as onboarding processes. They, we have an HR generalist, Kim Derby, who started at the town and is providing services to the school department and coming over a couple times every week. So she's been helping us with the onboarding and some of the HR, and Deb DuBois as well, who's at the town as far as people onboarding and giving them their benefit packets, which help our departments overall. So in the lines, you see changes to the lines. They're all yellow for me. Oops, I'm sorry.
Yep, there you go.
All right, sorry. Not always tech savvy here. So the changes would be advertising. We've been finding a lot of challenges with the advertising and hiring of new staff, especially in the IA, ABA realm. We've had a good solid core of teachers that are with us year to year, but we've had a lot of fluctuation and changes with some of the support staff. And advertising, we found to, we've had to reach out to other avenues. And one of them was Indeed, which has tended to be a little bit more expensive to advertise, but we've gotten some good candidates through them. But it's just trying to be creative and trying to find other ways to onboard new employees and employees that will, are effective and will want to keep with us. Regular education transportation is increasing from 876, 645 to 92477. That's per the contract that we have in place right now. I was able to renegotiate year four and five with the transportation company. So we were able to get a 4% increase for this year for 24 and a 5% increase. So this reflects a 5% increase for FY '25. And then in year FY '26, we'll need to go back out to bid for a new transportation contract. And then school committee dues. It's just the, the cost of dues and memberships for MASC and some of the conferences that the school committee's been trying to stay on top of and doing a great job of attending all the special events and doing things like that. So that's a little bit of an increase. Were we seeing that in dues across the board as well? And I have no new positions. So. Any questions?
Transportation is a killer.
Yeah, transportation's awful. Yeah. I have one question. The advertising that you talked about, are those, is that subscription-based? Or is that like something that?
Basically, it's, we've been, we were using School Spring, which has been effective to some extent, but we've also found that we're not getting the candidates. So in some of the positions that we've been hiring for, we've gone to places like Indeed. We've also started using Facebook and just putting the word out there as best as we can. But Indeed tends to be expensive. You know, the advertising and, you know, you have to pay per instance. So it's, it's, we've put a little bit more money into the line to just support that because we really didn't have an advertising lines per se. We had legal ads that we put in the paper for when we do like bids. So those were very minimal because we're not, you know, going out to bid for things that often. But we were using School Spring, which is a technology program. And it's now, it's through Power School, but that was paid through, through our technology budget. But this is actual advertising, so we needed kind of to add to that line to make it more cost-effective.
All right, thank you.
Through the chat, I think School Spring changed their format, and it's much harder to find stuff on there now. So it's weird.
Like agrees with you.
Yeah, it's awful.
Thank you for that support because we are, and I know Mr. Walton has had a, has had a difficult year this year and many of the administrators in trying to hire positions and support staff. So.
School Spring changed, it's not good.
So. But that's, any other questions? No? Thank you for your time and your support.
Yeah, thank you.
My stomach aches. I saw that. $120,000 bucks, my stomach hurts.
Mrs. Stanek?
12% Paketog's budget. Okay, my track record is.
Oh, boy.
I'm not going to touch anything, I promise. Last couple times, I knocked everything out, right? Good evening. It's always a pleasure to be here. And she had the great things that are going on at Paketog and the vision for the coming year. I want to thank you all for your support and making Paketog and Auburn a great place to learn and to work. As you know, Brenmore and PAC provide the kindergarten through second grade experience for our families, and therefore, our focus areas are the same, as you will see on our slides. However, we're going to do our best to share how our schools have and will continue to implement these initiatives a little bit. It's not repetitive, so we tried to, to coordinate so that we weren't repeating each other. So first off, the relationships and collaboration between the students, the staff, the families and the Auburn community make it possible to provide the excellence in education that we as Auburn are so proud to share. Starting this past summer, our school climate task force reviewed our school-wide expectations and motto to ensure they align with our goals of diversity, equity, inclusion and belonging for all. Together, we updated our school-wide expectations and motto to include kindness and ensure they were student-friendly. As ASOP reminds us, no act of kindness, no matter how small, is ever wasted. So now you will hear over the intercom through the halls and in the classrooms of PAC that we have PAC pride. We are positive, awesome and kind. We will be safe, respectful, responsible and kind today and every day. We dedicated the first two weeks of our school year to ensure that everyone at PAC understood and practiced our expectations throughout the school. And following our winter vacation, we will again dedicate time to review our expectations as part of our New Year's resolution and commitment to kindness. Through modeling kindness, we hope to instill this virtue in our students and all who interact with the PAC pride. And we hope we do that every day. We are in our third year of Inclusive Academy on Universal Design for Learning. Our students are benefiting from a wider range of opportunities to express their knowledge. Through professional development and grade-level meetings, staff continue to collaborate with each other to plan, share ideas and remove barriers within our curriculum. Through my own learning and observations, it is apparent that we have many great UDL practices in place and are expanding and updating our practices for the future. Our UDL coaches from PAC and Brenmore are now leading professional development for their colleagues and continue to collaborate with each other. For the first time, all three grade levels have taken the eye-ready diagnostic assessments to begin the school year in both reading and mathematics. We are able to look closely at those targeted subgroups that have been identified. This data, along with our DIBELS data, is reviewed through our data meeting process to ensure that we identify strengths and weaknesses of each and every student. We have scheduled full school data reviews, along with individual teacher and grade-level data meetings. I will work alongside Alan Keller to share the third-grade MCAS results with my staff to identify areas that may need a greater emphasis at the K-2 level. We want to build the strongest foundation possible for our students' future success. Our school improvement teams that have been established this school year allow for staff to work together with a diverse group of colleagues who represent all facets of our faculty. These teams allow for distributed leadership, collaboration and support of our focus areas. As we all know, time is precious, and this model is allowing us to support each other and our important work. Research shows that students under distributed leadership lead to higher academic performance. Teamwork makes the dream work, as teamwork achieves more than any individual can. Forgive me, I'm always repeating myself in my presentations, but I truly believe wholeheartedly that it takes a village to raise a child, and we continue to lean on our families and community partners to support our efforts. It truly takes all of us working together to provide diverse opportunities to support a well-balanced education. Together with my colleagues, I will continue to support our students, staff and families while presenting a fiscally responsible budget that supports our district initiatives. Please note that there are no changes to line items or new positions requested in the Paketog school budget for the fiscal year 2025. So now, are there any questions for me? Any questions? Well, thank you for your support. And now I'll turn it over to Beverly, Brooke Beverly, Ms. Beverly, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Jen.
Good job, Jen. Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to be here and to share about Brenmore's areas of focus for the 2024, 2025 school year. Like Mrs. Stanek said, our K-2 schools are collaborative and share similar focus areas. To begin, I just want to take a moment and talk about the importance of a smile. It's a simple gesture that kind of warms somebody's heart. It shows that you care. It's also a way to communicate, sometimes without saying anything at all. At Brenmore School this year, we're focusing on how we can be the reason that somebody smiles. We shared with our little learners how it is important to be respectful, responsible, safe and kind. We talked about what this looks like in all areas of our school and how it feels to make the right choices and how our students and staff can do their part by just simply smiling. If you visit Brenmore on any given day, you'll see the smile. If you visit Bryn Mawr on any given day, you'll see the smiles of engagements of our students. You might have presenters like the Acton Discovery Museum that came yesterday and shared with us that our first graders were the most polite students that he has ever had the pleasure of working with. Little bit of a proud principal here. And that you could see that our students genuinely, you know, just want to offer a welcoming smile to a friend, invite them to come play. Or you'll see our staff smiling when their students worked hard or they kind of achieved a goal. We're on a mission to kind of create a caring and empathetic place to come to school, one smile at a time. I'm honored to serve as the Bryn Mawr principal with a group of dedicated educators that are invested in the academic and social emotional growth of our students and thankful for our educators, you know, across the district that are all together kind of here to kind of benefit Auburn students. Our first area of focus is the integration of universal design for learning, UDL, and strategies that also incorporate student voice throughout the curriculum. You're going to hear about UDL from many administrators in the district. We're going to continue our work focusing on the multiple means of engagement or the why through such things as students, you know, personal experiences as they create math problems, providing different levels for a center activity, or providing like a self-selected seat for success to motivate students. When we provide multiple means of action and expression, the how, this will focus on how students demonstrate their understanding in multiple ways. This may include, you know, choice boards or providing scaffolds for writing where students, you know, you know, at a primary level might start with just writing with pictures, then might include labels, then might go through and need sentence starters to then be able to form full sentences and paragraphs. You know, by providing multiple means of representation or the what, this is referring to students that are able and how they're able to access the material. Examples might be including opportunities for students that they can visually see a picture, you know, or they can kind of contribute to a conversation and have that student voice within their curriculum through a discussion. We look forward to our continued collaboration with Paketog and other schools within the district related to this focused area. Our second focused area includes the use of a targeted wind or what I need differentiated block to provide intervention, enrichment and SCL support with a focus on our underrepresented student groups such as our EL students and our special education students. Our wind block allows teachers to analyze data and create some strategic targeted groups based on student need. Bryn Mawr School has built a strong foundation of literacy foundation, of literacy intervention over the years, but we're moving into a model that not only provides intervention, but we're also providing enrichment opportunities in math, in literacy and in SCL. We're utilizing our Title I math parent, math interventionist during this block to provide some targeted math instruction and our math paraprofessional to provide some math enrichment and math enrichment group. In addition, some of our more advanced readers in first and second grades are working in some book clubs. We've added in some SCL intervention groups so that our school counselor can support our students based on some different areas that they might need. We continue to disaggregate our data and look to look at our multilingual learners and our special education students utilizing our DIBELS and eye-ready data points. Collectively, as a staff, we continue to evaluate this data, determine if our current instructional practices need to be refined, just to ensure that our students that might be learning a little differently are provided with the effective learning methods that they may need. Our third and final focus area is a continuation of the work that we that we began in the beginning of the year, including the implementation of school improvement teams. Mrs. Danick and I started our K to two improvement teams initiative this year, which evolved from some of the positive work that Mr. Desto had done up at the middle school. Our work will continue to update the behavioral expectations of students utilizing restorative practices with our school climate task force. Our diversity, equity, inclusion and belonging team's goal is to ensure that our teams, our team, the team is that all students, families and staff feel welcomed within our school community. Our UDL and curriculum team focuses on grade level curriculum by incorporating voice and choice and by helping to remove the barriers in learning. Our school improvement teams for next year will factor in input from teachers and from students. At this time, I'd like to share that I have no changes to my line items as we remain level funded, nor am I requesting any new positions at Bryn Mawr School. Are there any questions at this time?
Any questions?
No. I'd like to turn it over to the one and only Dr. Susan Lopez, principal of Swanson Intermediate School.
Thank you.
Thank you. She's a radio voice.
I'm talking about quicks.
There you go. Good evening, everyone. Great to see everybody. I'm really happy to share some of the great happenings that are occurring at Swanson over the past year and what we anticipate looking forward into the upcoming year. As you've heard from my colleagues, UDL is becoming embedded in all of our practices in all of our schools, and we continue to refine these consistently and constantly. Using the UDL framework, we strive to make learning accessible to all students regardless of their abilities, background or learning styles. Teachers in all content areas are providing multiple means of instruction, engagement and student work products. Through the collaboration in teams and departments, Swiss's talented teachers find many ways to deliver the content, diverse ways to engage students and provide multiple options for demonstrating understanding. For instance, in ELA session or during an ELA session or lesson, a teacher might begin by introducing a short story using visual aids and perhaps realia or hands-on materials so that students can build some background. Students give are given a choice as to how they might like to read the story based on their learning style. Typically, it might be independent reading, it might be reading with a partner, listening to the story with specific questions that set the purpose and guide their learning. Students then have an option of demonstrating what they've learned through a written assignment or an online assignment, or maybe creating some slides using Google Classroom. This gives students the choice on how they learn as well as how they want to demonstrate their knowledge. When I ask teachers what they like most about UDL, one key aspect is the flexibility it provides in their instructional methods. Also, by designing lessons with a variety of materials, activities and assessments from the outset, they can better address the diverse needs of their students without needing extensive modifications later. When I ask students, they didn't know what UDL was, rather they really like when their teachers allow them the opportunity to choose the best method based on their preferences and strengths. Students say they definitely like it more and want to do their assignments, which speaks to being motivated and engaged in the learning process. The upcoming year, I'm super excited to have two talented and very excited UDL teachers, excuse me, coaches, who are teachers, and they'll be great resources and continue the professional development within the building with the whole staff moving forward. A great example of this even just this year and recently is a book study that's been offered to staff that will be facilitated by the Swiss UDL coaching team. And it's just a great opportunity to get together with peers as professionals, relax together, have that educational dialogue and develop their expertise. The second point, and it's similar to what you've heard so far from colleagues, is the school improvement teams to enhance all aspects of our school community. We've developed multiple school improvement teams to engage our school community on many different levels. I'll name just a few, but I must note within each that I mentioned, the ongoing input and feedback from students, staff and parents is critical and paramount. Our safety team works with district officials, the Auburn police, the fire, two insurer and district central office officials to make sure our community is proactively working to maintain safety. We have scheduled drills and building checks as well as routine checks in the systems we have in place to make sure the ebb and flow of the school is working the way it needs to. We also created a school climate team, working together to maintain a positive vibe in the building and instilling school pride, both in staff and students through fun activities, theme days, special recognitions, talking up all the great things that are occurring at the school. The kids especially like when we do things with the teachers or have them do goofy, silly things and they cheer their teachers on to hopefully win whatever it is that they're coming to the office for at the end of the day. Sometimes it's something really good, sometimes it's really something kooky and tchotchke fun stuff, but try to have fun. We've also looked at our diversity, equity and inclusion team and creating that team. They're working to make sure that Swanson is welcoming as a school so that every student and all students and every child and adult that enters Swanson feels welcomed, supported and cared for. The team uses informal and formal information to address any needs that arise. We also added a unified team that's been developing opportunities for social interactions between students that have various needs with peer models to ensure we do have full inclusion. And more importantly, develop meaningful relationships, real relationships. It's heartwarming and I was thinking about it today, just today I was watching some students together and it was just an authentic relationship as they were singing and dancing and it was just sincere childish freedom goofiness. It was just so nice to see. In terms of community service teams, we've developed this team to put together some initiatives to really create a sense of social responsibility throughout the community and specifically the Swiss community and our Auburn community, our home. Everyone gets involved in this, the message and the sense of community. The overarching message, however, is really the feeling that someone gets or that you get when you know that you're making a positive impact in the lives of others and you're doing it because it's just the right thing to do. The last team I'll just mention today in terms of our school improvement teams is family and community engagement. This team, I just have to mention, it feels so much better this year. It feels like you want to call it the normalcy is coming back, but we recognize how much our families need to feel part of their children's and their child's school community. So this group and all of us collectively have been working on really building strong relationships with families so that school and home feel as one. This includes developing and encouraging in-person events, multiple communications throughout the course of the year. Overall, the Swiss improvement teams are working towards continuous improvement in all areas. The final point that I'll speak to is the embedded inclusive practices that are ensuring an environment that celebrates diversity. Swanson is committed to fostering an inclusive environment that celebrates diversity and this commitment is evident throughout the school. Our curriculum is continuously evolving to ensure that the lessons are thoughtfully designed to incorporate diverse perspectives, cultures and voices so that every child has a broad range of experiences and feels seen. We continue to seek and provide professional development to enhance teachers' understanding of inclusive teaching methods that strengthen their ability to create classrooms where every student feels valued and represented. Recently, a group of Swiss teachers attended an outside professional development. I heard great things about it. It was titled Developing Cultural Proficiency. The team of teachers who attended not only spoke positively about this learning, but are inspired and super enthusiastic to bring this knowledge back to Swiss and their colleagues. I think I see one in the crowd. So we're expecting fun, good things. Oh, two actually. Oh, maybe I can bring you to the mic. But they're very enthusiastic to bring their learning. They had so much to say about this. We also actively seek to provide and promote and support activities that embrace diversity and culture through a variety of cross-curricular activities throughout the course of the day and the trimesters as well as clubs and event. And one simple example, and I'll make a plug for tomorrow's Swiss Literacy Night, we've embedded multicultural activities in this particular family event, recordings of diverse readers who have different backgrounds and public figures, Braille activities to develop an understanding of how someone else might read differently, sensory activities and more. Through these initiatives, we strive to instill in our students a deep appreciation for the differences that we all have and a strong sense of belonging. The bottom line, at Swiss and throughout our Auburn Public Schools, we're committed to fostering an environment where everyone can thrive academically, socially and emotionally. I'll leave you with something once said, and I paraphrase, "A good leader isn't known by how many followers they have, rather how many leaders they create." And I know that together we'll continue to build our students into the future leaders we'll be proud of. In terms of speaking to our line items, I don't have any positions that I'm seeking at this time. And the only item to address is after-school programming costs. We have a decrease in terms of that, but a savings and that's based on needs of whatever clubs that the students have. And that's also flexible and we have appendix C to also support our kids and what clubs might be able to be offered. So anyone have any questions?
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm just kidding. Well, yes, only for, I only hold grudges for a couple of decades. It's fine. I know. It's hilarious. I know. I already said it last time. That's all. It's no joke. It's not lost on me that this kind of feels a bit like one of those all-day music festivals in that, you know, in the beginning, it's like everybody's so fired up about, no matter what the band is like. And then by the end, you've got Led Zeppelin on there and nobody's even listening because it's been too long. But I'm not saying that I'm Led Zeppelin, believe me. But if you were to go to Auburn Middle School and you run into any student and you say, "What does Mr. Desto always say are the two things that are scientifically proven to enhance a person's happiness?" There's only two things scientifically proven that over and over again have been proven to enhance somebody's happiness. The kid would probably say, "I don't know," or "I have to go to the bathroom." But what they, but what they, what they should say is, does anybody know them? The two things?
It's smile one.
It's, you're close. You're close. That does, as you get older, certainly, but no. So one is expressing gratitude for the things you have and two is helping others. And so I always want to start with making sure that everyone understands how grateful I am to be here. I realize I'm lucky to have this job and to be a leader in a place where I have such a great team around me, the people here, who you can see the talent that they have and the hearts that they have, but also my team at Auburn Middle School who are spectacular and it's, and your support is critical for that. So thank you for that. I'm grateful to be here. You know, we have, I don't, they probably don't make kids any better than the ones we have, but they are still 11 to 14 years old. And not just 11 to 14-year-olds, but 11 to 14-year-olds in a post-COVID world, COVID world where all of us, society, not just our, our kids, are largely technology addicted and have a lot of challenges that we, that are kind of new to us. So our number one challenge at the school, in my judgment, is helping kids to be like settled, like to just quiet their minds a little bit, to be civil and respectful, to understand how the, how important it is to be civil and respectful to other people and to really participate in their education and understand that their education truly matters for what happens 10, 20 years from now. That's not easy to do with kids that, with kids any age, really. So I just wanted to start with that, to put a little bit of a different spin on why we think that universal design for learning is so important from K to 12, pre-K to 12, probably. It's just, there's no magic solution to, to anything, but it is, it is a methodology that enables teachers to present things in such a way that kids that are in that situation that I just described are much more likely to be engaged in their education. And that's so important to us right now. So that's one of our big initiatives going forward. The school improvement team process has always been something that I, I love to do. I changed one thing in it last year for the, much for the better, which is that if a team comes out with, we used to do like an end of the year improvement plan type of thing. And now if a team comes out with a great idea in September and it's going to be helpful right now, we'll implement it right now. And that change has made a big difference in our school. We've had a lot of good things come from that. So that was the one thing I've gotten right in 31 years. And, and then my last bullet is just basically overall to say that we, we focus a lot on getting kids in a position to be able to learn, to try to help them over some of the barriers that they have. And I like to just tell a quick story, which at the, on the one hand, explains how our school is succeeding there in, in a lot of ways. And it also highlights some of the great work of some of my colleagues over here to my right. We have a new student who came from one of the big cities in Massachusetts and he was in, he was, his IEP had him in a substantially separate classroom where he didn't go to regular classes. He was always in a room because of past behaviors. And so when he came for his tour with his father, this is for you, Joe, the father couldn't believe that our school wasn't first year, just opened this year. So he was, he was amazed at how clean the school was and how brand new it looked. So I, you know, he should be very proud of that. Joe and his staff do an amazing job. Shout out to Ray Friedland, my head custodian, who's one of the best guys I've ever worked with. Now, he's been with us a couple of weeks. Now, he's been with us a couple of weeks now and he's already going out to like three classes a day. Now, the program that Greg, largely Greg spearheaded was, we have an outstanding new teacher with an instructional assistant who's very strong. And the two of them, they either have kids in the classroom with them who generally struggle in the regular classroom, or they're out at regular classes supporting those kids in the class so that the teacher has the, like incredibly talented support for that kid in the class. And so he's really doing well and he's really happy so, it's only two weeks, I mean, and you know, tomorrow he could tell me what to do, you know, but, but so far, I think that's, that is a highlight of the things that we're trying to do, to put kids in a position who have so many challenges to be successful. So I wanted to be sure to mention that. And, you know, that's pretty much it. I will answer any questions that you have at this time.
Any questions or comments?
No.
Great.
Yeah, no, that was awesome.
That was great.
Thank you.
All right. Button here. Well, I'm gonna do an introduction. And it is my understanding that Mr. DeLongchamp is going to be the Bo Jackson of this presentation and do multiple presentations, so, Mr. DeLongchamp.
Thank you.
Good evening. Jenny and Heidi left me notes. So I want to begin by saying just a little bit about our current climate in regards to, we'll start with fine arts and then I'll work my way through athletics in a moment, but I can't begin to tell you about how many conversations I have with Jenny during the course of a week, a month, throughout the year, about what we can do to increase the opportunities for our kids. She's truly trying to be as clever she can possibly be. She's looking and turning up every stone, trying to come up with ideas, whether it's trying to break down music, trying to create music in different ways, trying to find what is that type of music that kids like and enjoy, what is it in our fine arts programs across the board and even our classes that we can do differently and better to get, to just broaden our reach. And I have to say, even this year alone, I think about, we have the two plays that were added on, we've always had our spring production, I know you got a chance to meet my kids and I, sorry I couldn't be here earlier in the month, but with the Charlie Brown production that was super successful. She's captured and she's starting to, she's looking at things that are high interest where our kids really find connection with it and they truly enjoy it. And I can't say enough positives about that. We also had, George and Jenny just took a group of high school students to, I guess you'd call them our districts. There's a lot of letters in front of them, like C-M-D-D-E-M-A, but, and six of our students were selected, they were either band members or chamber choir singers to perform later in the school year. So we're super proud of those kids and maybe you'll get a chance to hear from them at a later meeting. In regards to fiscal year '25, she, again, I know some of this is similar to other years, expanded extracurricular opportunities, like I've mentioned, fall play, we had conversations even today about indoor percussion and how to make this work in relating to color guard and just with increased costs and trying to create this opportunity for our kids. Increased student retention across performing ensembles in our high school grade levels. I think, you know, pre-COVID, we had certain numbers and then post-COVID, we have these different numbers and like how to bring them up and how to regain that interest again and how to re, kind of calculate things a little bit. Expand opportunities for more hands-on electives at the high school to engage non-traditional music learners. And these are those classes that, you know, we have to do a lot of, I'm not going to say selling, but we definitely have to inform the kids of what like learn to jam actually means. And some of these classes where they're actually creating the music with some of the, with the technology and the computers that we have in the room, truly fascinating. That probably would have been me, nobody would have wanted to hear me sing, that is for sure. Excuse me. And then as far as her, let's see, increasing opportunities for students to use music technology to create, express and engage with all musical styles. The budget is level funded, there's no increases and there's no new positions in regards to fine arts.
Right.
Any questions?
Questions? No?
No? Okay, part one.
All right.
Hey, athletics. Now I have to start off by just saying a couple of things and I have to plug Heidi Tatum. I forget that it's only been two trimesters, 26 weeks, and her footprint on our program is immense. I, we absolutely have the right person, creative, dynamic, even in how she looked at the budget and the breakdown and the cost. She's a math teacher too, right? So she's breaking down everything with numbers and everything else and, but it all makes sense. Her, whoops. There we go, thank you. And so I just have to, you know, I'll continue to plug her because her availability, her work with students, her, just some of the online stuff that she's doing just to promote us, and I can't wait to see where it goes. I mean, 26 weeks and I can tell you, having that job for nine years and a part of last year is definitely a difficult job and it just eats you away because of the hours. And to have a young family and do as well as she's doing, it's truly phenomenal. So, great stuff by Heidi. In regards to this upcoming school year or looking at next school year, reviving the Student Leadership Club, so we've had this club in the past. I think, again, I'll go back and I know I hate blaming COVID for everything, but I think it just kind of distracted us a little bit and we certainly had that year where we weren't even running a lot of athletic programs. So some of this stuff went away and we just like, kind of just like plugged away to try to like regain where we were at. And now to work alongside with the MIA and some of the programming that they have to build up our student athletes. I mean, they're students first, right? But they have so much impact when you have 400 of them walking around the building and literally, I think we have almost like 400 of them out of 740, that's a lot of population and that's a lot of influence in our building. So to teach them leadership skills, and it doesn't mean it has to be extroverted leadership, there's a lot of things you can do to be helpful and you don't need a captain's band to be a leader. So I look forward to seeing where that goes. Whoops, so sorry. Updating our Auburn High School Training Facility. So we have, if you've been, we have this great space, right? So we have almost a field house, almost, right? And then we have those weight rooms in the back. And our weight room is certainly like up-to-date for the most part and, but I would say like the cardio side of things is something that we need to start to think about as far as like, how do we get to a place where we start to renew some of that equipment? How do, just to be able, to better able to help our athletes. And I think it's something that we're just going to need to dedicate some time and energy because I think some of the equipment we've had for a very, very long time. And as you guys know from some of those things that sit in our basement, after a while, it just doesn't support, especially when we have these athletes that are bigger, faster and stronger. We can't just, we can't put them on just anything. So she's starting to take a look into that. And then Huddle. And Huddle is, and I'm not going to give this enough justice, but it's a tool that coaches can use to increase their coaching practices. And it's through video and there's all kinds of breakdowns of like what's actually happening within a play, within a game. It can break down as much as like if you guys were my team, you know, what Jesse's doing compared to what Brooke's doing. And it has the ability to break all that stuff down and then for us as coaches to be able to give that back to kids, to be able to put kids in the best possible chance to be successful. So Heidi's done a great job working with Steve Scott, who's our television production person who you've heard me mention several times in the past, along with Chris Hugo, to generate funding to support Huddle within our building. And this allows us to be able to film, film more and give more access to filming. This past fall, I don't know if you guys had the privilege of taking a look at any of the YouTube videos of games, there was so much content out there, our football games, our soccer games, but we had some limitations, right? We don't have that ability to go put that in our field hockey field. Heidi, I think, has created a way to make that happen next year, which is awesome. Heidi's figured out a way to make it happen in our gymnasiums. So, so some good stuff there.
Great.
As far as changes, there are some changes. Transportation, but I think you'd see that that combines both the Auburn High School and the middle school, so it puts it as one line item. And that's why you go see the jump from 85 to 110. Athletic officials, so this is all set, we don't make the rates for the officials, we can't pay them by anything but what the MIA states, what an official costs, and those things go up yearly. Athletic team equipment, and this just goes with the increasing costs of everything. And I know you guys have children and I know you guys are paying for cleats and whether it be cleats, bathing suits, any kind of gear, mouthgods even, right? It's just, it's super expensive and that shows a little bit of an increase there as well as we have to pay attention to the uniforms we put our students into, right? Because we're starting to try to revamp the uniform distribution lists also. So that tries to get included in that line. First aid training supplies, again, that's just that $1,000 increase is just the increase in what we just need basically, it's not the same cost as it was last year for a Band-Aid or a tape. And then our dues have gone up, and again, this is controlled by our league, this is controlled by some of the organizations where we choose our All-Stars and then our MIA dues, which makes up a majority of that.
Okay. All right.
Any questions about the athletic budget?
No, but I do have pieces of equipment that I could donate that are covered in clothing, like fitness equipment.
Yeah, they're currently like a clothing rack.
I have a few in the basement.
Do you know if we offered that in what we'd have in our front lawn? How much, how much Joe would hate me? Yes.
Thank you.
My gosh, I've had this cold down for the last few days and my mouth is so dry, so please forgive me. So, yep.
You want a hot drop?
So when I last got a chance to speak with you guys in the fall, I emphasized relationships, connection, and that's where I want to begin tonight because, oh, thank you so much. I can't begin to say how appreciative I am for my staff and how hard they're working because I think it all starts here. I think it's the welcome that students feel when they come into the classroom, I think it's the consistency that they feel amongst teachers, I think it's, I think it's the quick comment they might hear about, about something that just happened in the day or maybe an achievement to celebrate or just even as the year, as the year goes on, you get to know your kids, you get to, you get to see them when they're maybe not having that good day and be able to pat them on the back, even if it's just like a quick comment to say, "Hey, if you need anything, we're here for you." And that's really helped create a great start for us at the high school this year. I can tell you that our attendance is much, much improved and our discipline is very much down. And I can't wait to take a look at data because we're going to start to take a look at that and go into those numbers, I mean, the trimester ends tomorrow and then we start trimester two on Friday. So it's amazing that 13 weeks have gone by and there's been so many good things to talk to you guys about, I could have had 10 bullet points. But I think that's the heart of it right there. In regards to, you know, that first bullet, it's like almost like everybody else, but I'll say, my story might be a little bit different, although they've probably seen all the same thing. I happened to be in an observation earlier in the month and in a lot of times in an observation, I'm not only looking at the teacher, I'm watching the students and their engagement. And so I happened to be just like, just like watching the room a little bit and not knowing what direction it was going to go and it was near the end of class and the teacher began presenting what the assessment or the project was going to be. And, and I still stayed and just kind of just scanned the room a little bit and the teacher went on to say, "Well, you have choice. You get one of three different options." And I started to watch because I was curious to see what their reaction was going to be. And I know that for me, I might not want to, I might not at that time when I was in high school to stand up in front of a group and do a presentation, right? It might have been doing, I'm not saying it was a poster board, I can't remember all three, but it might have been the poster board or to work with a group. But the fact that the kids had choice seemed to relieve a little pressure because every one of our kids learns a little bit differently. So, and we get a chance to see that firsthand and to see that impact was truly, like to see it in action was great, I just got lucky. But I know it's happening, we see it in our special education classrooms daily, we start to see this, we see this a lot in our programming, our special programming that we've put in place and that we've tried to strengthen over the course of the year. And that leads me into the enterprise program. And I'll say, we spent a lot of time and effort over the course of this past year reviewing what we had in place and I think we had to like modify and change and really take a look and say, "Wow, kids are different today. They're not the same, right? And so how do we like change with them?" And like their needs are different. So we, we spent, I don't know how many hours in the summer, but countless hours and bothering Greg often, trying to figure out, "Hey, can we do this and can we do that and what about this?" And, you know, everything that we put in place for this, my goal, our goals for next year in regards to creating a social-emotional component or a greater component in the room, has to do with the things that we put in place. Like we created a home base for our kids this year, so they have a place to go to each block of the day. We created elective periods, we have a point person in the room, so they have that common person that really knows them, that they can rely on throughout the whole day. And those, those three areas, well, four areas that I just mentioned made a world of difference. But now we also understand that there's this social-emotional component to this too that we have to focus on because at times, some of these students, they're not so, you know, focused on like six hours of bookwork, that's not really practical, right? And there's some things that they need to do to improve upon, to heal a little bit in some places in order to be more productive in the day. So that's our hope with our social-emotional component. Within our communities, this is that advisory period, I know communities might seem strange because I know that's a language the other schools use, but we have communities where our high school students have a common like home base, we'll call it, that they report to and that they see that teacher for four years. Like Karen Ballway is my daughter's homeroom teacher for four years. So that creates that greater connection that we talked about earlier, that deepening relationship, that person outside of any of our classroom teachers that might change routinely, that she knows, that she's, that's always going to be there. And we've done a lot of great work within our community period and I'll even mention some of it. Just, just recently, we've collected food for Auburn Youth and Family Services, they almost collected 400 items just recently. They showed, based off our communities, we had our students show appreciation for district staff during Thanksgiving week by writing out who and what we were thankful for. So getting high school kids to actually like reflect like that, but they were so proud. And these, these little, these little post-its, all those signs are all over our building and, and they, and they're really, really, really nice. I mean, last week was a really bad week and people were sending me pictures of things that were on the walls and that was really touching and, and I think it has a way to really improve morale. And, you know, it's, it's hard work sometimes doing what we do and especially what our teachers do and I think it's nice to have that appreciation from our students. So that was great. And then building continued connections between students and their community teacher. And this is going to be through just a variety of different activities that we're going to go through over the next, well, the second part of the year, the next 26 weeks. And then lastly, and again, there's so many more things than just lastly, but we are super excited. So I know you guys are very well aware of our ADL, the ADL programming that we've done across the district. And next week, we start our peer training. So we have, I believe, between 18 and 20 students who are going to train over three days, once a week, through the first three weeks in December, and they're going to learn about implicit and explicit bias. And, I mean, it's super confusing and challenging, but we do know that kids learn from kids really well, but it's, it's really hard training for them. And I'm super excited because then we're going to try to look for opportunities to get these kids out there. And again, with staff help, we're not just going to say go, right? But it's like a lot, a lot, a lot of baby steps, a lot of crawling, which is absolutely okay. And my hope is that after we get some momentum, and it's a younger group, so I don't lose too many of them, so I'll have them all next year, and then we'll train another group along with this group. So we'll always have a continuation of some students to help support the training. And we'll be able to get, not only do more work in our building, but maybe get across our, our district, which would be great. And again, a lot of it is like language and vocabulary and understanding the impact of, of bias. And I don't think, I think it's, I think it's really, really confusing and hard for kids to understand, so they do a really nice job at the ADL doing the training. So that is, that is what our goals are for '25. As far as changing line items, I just have that one decrease. And this was working with, with Mrs. Wisbicki, taking a look at our trends and how much we've, what we've used in that line item. And that made sense as to what we've been using over the last, over the last several years. So, I mean, every little bit counts, I know it's not as much as you guys. So, I mean, every little bit counts. I know it's not as much as you guys or what I would love to give back. But, and then we have no, we have no new positions at the high school.
It wasn't an increase, so.
Do you guys have any questions for me? I'm sorry that I was long-winded. I apologize.
Nope, that was great, Dan. Thank you so much. Very well done.
So before we kind of move on to the summary of this program, I just want to say thank you to the leadership team. Thank you to the teachers who all contribute to the information that was shared here tonight and all the staff. And I think, I feel like you can see us rowing in the same direction. And I believe that when that happens is when you make progress. So I see great progress in our future for our kids and for our teachers. And I just want to thank all of them for kind of carrying that torch and bringing that forward. So we're going to kind of get to the end of all of this tonight. And so we are here tonight. We present you with a draft budget of thirty-one million, eight hundred and twenty-eight thousand, three hundred and thirty-six dollars and sixty-eight cents. It's an increase of one million, six hundred and ninety-six thousand, sixty dollars over the FY twenty-four budget of thirty million, one hundred and thirty-two thousand, two hundred and seventy-six dollars. Again, to reinforce that we've incorporated a large number of offsets totaling over three million dollars. But this does equate to a five-point-six-three percent increase. And honestly, it's not lost on any of us that this is a significant increase over the budget approved last fiscal year. Yet we face some unprecedented increases this year based on our maintenance costs are one of them. And certainly our contractual obligations that still remain unknown. So we've not presented a specific number here based on our contractual obligations increase. It is in the budget, but I felt like the numbers we presented here tonight are solid. This is what we, we need. We don't know what we're going to need yet related to negotiations. So we reflected an increase of about seven hundred and thirty thousand dollars. That, that is reflected in the budget. And, you know, we're going to see as we continue to negotiate in good faith with the AEA. Shortly after the new year, we'll also begin our negotiations with the ABA bargaining group. So we've done our best to provide an estimate related to what negotiations may cost us. But as noted throughout this presentation, this is a draft. It still needs your approval. It needs the approval of the select board, the finance committee, and ultimately our town meeting members. As you've heard throughout this, right? We remain committed to supporting the social emotional needs of our kids. We want to continue the programs that we have at Swiss and the middle school and the high school that I think you have heard in multiple ways, how they have helped our children. So we want to keep those, those programs going versus the alternative for some of those kids, which is going elsewhere for schooling. And again, has a financial impact of its own on the district. So we're, again, we're going to maintain our current positions and materials. We're continuing a negotiation process. You have all the electricities, I mean, all the increases related to electricity, fuel, contracted services, our offsets, the use of our grants. You know, this may still change based on what our chapter seventy funding comes in at. But I will say that chapter fund, chapter seventy is based on our enrollment. Our enrollment is a little bit down. However, our low-income students and our EL population is up a little bit, which that can also help us. So it's a bit of a moving target with where that's going to come in at. And again, on January third, you will be charged with moving forward a budget to the town. We do have one more meeting where we can continue some discussion if needed. So I'd like to end our presentation this evening with the quote, "Community is much more about belonging to something. It's about doing something together that makes belonging matter." I thought this was appropriate because this budget isn't about what Beth Chamberlain wants. It's about the collaboration that's taken, taken place, about what our students and our staff needs to maintain the exceptional, exceptional experience our kids have in the Auburn Public Schools. And it's about remembering that although we are the Auburn Public Schools, we're part of this community. We're not a standalone organization. And because of that, we have to remember and respect the support that the town gives us. I believe that this budget does that, even given the percent increase. And we present this to you tonight and we hope that you will lend us our support as we hope that the community will as well down the road. So again, thankful for all we give. I, I, you know, Greg talks about being grateful. I am grateful to be in the role I'm in, in the district I'm in, and in the community I'm in. Because Auburn is unlike many other places and we have a lot to be proud of and thankful of for you. So if you have any questions now, we can take those.
Any questions?
No, through the chair. I just want to thank everyone because that was a lot of hard work.
Yeah, I'd like to add to that, um, yeah, I'm grateful to be here and have you guys just really, it's amazing all the work that you guys put in. And you keep the kids your main focus. I feel like our whole faculty does that. They make, they put the kids first and it's just, it's really important to keep that our focus.
Yeah, through the chair, quick story. Last night was the band concert. And I have the privilege of having a very, very talented sixth grade percussionist. And at that, laugh when I'm getting recorded. You might see this. At that concert, there were fifth grade teachers, there were two that I saw, could have been more, that just went on their own time. And you saw the other kids that had them just light up, seeing them. And just seeing that collaboration, you have these fifth grade teachers help, supporting their former students who aren't even their students anymore in a high school that's beautiful. And then to top it all off, there was a Swiss music teacher and a middle school music teacher who did a duet to Love Is An Open Door by Frozen while the sixth graders were playing. It just showed the love that the teachers have for the kids in this district. And that's just one story. I mean, I, I have the privilege of getting to go into the schools and seeing the love in every single school that I get to go into. So I can't think of a better place for myself, my kids.
It's a great place to work and it's a great place to learn.
Yeah, definitely.
We have a lot of compassionate teachers in our district, so.
It's good stuff.
All right.
All right, onward.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, you can go home now. Have a long night, long day.
Thanks. Sorry. Thanks, everyone.
Thank you so much.
Mr. Desta, when you asked us,
Hi, thank you.
One of the issue things, I wanted to say something.
Good night.
Have a good night. Box me so I wouldn't know.
Maybe.
Thank you. I mean, why didn't they want to stay? All right, where am I? Onward. Joe, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, let's see, we did that. We'll move on to policy updates. I thank you, Madam Chair. This is our second reading of the two new additional policies related to field trips for students. And I didn't know if anyone had any points of discussion or questions. I do still need to do some research based on our first conversation, but I didn't know if anyone had any other thoughts since we last met.
I couldn't get the whole thing to download, so like the, all the pages, so I'm going to finish it. I didn't finish reading through the whole thing.
Okay.
I don't know why. I even had Mandy, you know.
Yeah. Well, you have time. Is this the first, the second reading?
Second.
Okay. Um, yeah, and I had talked to Beth a little bit prior to this meeting. On the field trips, I have a couple concerns and maybe I'm just, I don't know, being irrational. I have no idea, but the timing, I didn't know if we wanted, as a committee, wanted to rethink the notification timing when it comes to field trips. Is three months really enough notice when it comes to out-of-state trips?
I was actually thinking the same thing as you were.
Yeah, so.
Even, even maybe even putting something on there like for out-of-state, out-of-country too.
Well, maybe do like a one-year notice for an out-of-the-country, you know? Just because the world is ever-changing right now, I feel like a lot can change in a year. And it certainly gives us enough time to monitor situations that may arise.
Yeah, I definitely think even three months for an overnight or out-of-state is too short.
Yeah.
Because depending on cost.
Right, they might have to fundraise for this too.
So three months is like, for those people that might have financial difficulty, I think three months is too little. I think maybe do, maybe do six months for overnight and out-of-state. And then, you know, maybe even like three months for in-state.
Through the chair, I agree. I'm just wondering, are there any field trips that happen in the first few months of school that might be out-of-state that, that that could put a hindrance on?
Skiing. That skiing to Sugarland or whatever.
Yeah, but you could do that the year before. You could do that like prior to the end of the school year.
They have done that where they've come in the spring for a trip in the fall.
Oh, okay.
They have done that.
That's good.
And if it's a repeat trip, there might be some leniency there. You know, like the Quebec thing, we, yeah, we knew the ins and outs of that already and it was very successful. And a lot of the trips that the eighth graders are going on, you know, a lot of those are repeat trips. The Patriot Place was a repeat trip. And, I mean, the teachers are already very much aware of how that's run and the ins and outs of that field trip. So, I mean, maybe, maybe there's leniency there with the notification timing.
Does the school committee always, does a school committee have to approve in-state trips?
No.
Right?
Just out of state.
Just out of state.
International.
Out-of-state and out-of-country.
Yeah.
Yep, yep.
Yeah, I, I'd still like to know, even if they're moving in-state, you know, just to have the heads up so we know where our students are going. And another point, you know, before teachers look outside of Massachusetts, maybe make sure we've exhausted all potential in-state. Beth, you brought up Tanglewood, you know, maybe that is a trip that could be explored. Or maybe let's look at the Hanover or, you know, Boston first before considering further trips. So, you know, a lot of things can be accomplished right here within our great state. It'd save money too. Yeah. We are living in a more and more unstable world. You know, it's not like it used to be to be able to take those trips to, you know, to Europe or wherever.
You have to think of safety.
A lot more considerations.
Yeah, definitely.
So I'm going to, I'm going to continue to do some research. I did reach out to my core group of superintendents. Most of them had very similar policies, but I think that some research around some districts, maybe a little bit further away will be, may yield at least a basis for something we can start to work on to revise some of what we think. But I think the time changes makes sense as far as notification.
Okay.
Great.
Thank you.
So more to come.
Yep. Work on that.
Great.
Okay. So let's see about that. So are we good with the student, the rest of those policies? We'll wait on those and, okay. Uh, we'll move on to new business. There is none.
No, we, we didn't put any of those in because we knew we'd have the budget presentation tonight, so.
And we'll move on to the business and financial report.
I placed in your packet a yet-to-date budget report dated November twentieth, twenty-twenty-three for your review. I've also provided a listing of budget transfers dated eleven, twenty-twenty-three between the same series for information and between different series for which I'm seeking your approval. I'm happy to answer any questions if you have any.
Any questions or comments?
No.
No. Seek a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve the list of transfers dated eleven, twenty-twenty-three as presented by the business manager.
A second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. There's a vote. And we do not need executive session tonight.
No, we do not.
So I will seek a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
A second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. There's a vote. Thank you, everyone. Have a good night.
Thank you.
Thank you.